Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Don Patrol. I'm Cliff Krieger, your host. Sitting next to me is Jim Peters. Out in Internet land, we have Mike Smith in New York. And we're hoping Fru and Kenbang is going to be zooming in in a minute. Tell me about your campaign. How's it going?
How it's going? Oh, thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. And I'd like also to take a few seconds today to remember those who lost their lives for our nation on September 11th. Well, thank you very much. We'll always remember their sacrifices. My campaign is moving along very well. And I'm getting a lot of encouragement on the trail. But what I can say is, I entered this race as a Loaian to serve Lowell, to move Lowell forward like all of us as Paria too. And I entered this race because most people encouraged me to join the race and that they need more voices so that we can debate the issues that can move Lowell forward. But as I walked the trail, I'm discovering things which posing a lot of concerns. I have lost almost 20 signs and my big banners have been taken down and just destroyed. I asked the landlords and those who have authorized me to put my signs on their property. They said they have not, they are not, they don't know what is going on. I have reported to the police and the police have taken reports. So I'm just worried, but that cannot deter me because Lowell is our home and we need all voices to be heard. And I am listening to the constituents. They said they need all voices. And I'm looking forward to the debates. I didn't enter this race to, against anybody or against an individual. I entered this race to serve Lowell because I have benefited a lot from Lowell. Lowell, the citizens are very, very welcoming and generous. And I always say that to whom much is given, much is expected. And it is time for me to start giving back. And as I walk the streets of Lowell, I hear, I listen to people and some of them are excited that for the first time, they have seen someone walk the streets and talk to them and they are asking, what happened before? And where are the people who are serving us? A big, how can a big banner, it's not really a sign, two very large banners just disappear? My banners, wherever I go, all the banners are there. And you will see areas that I put my banner alongside other candidates. But when I watch very carefully, you see that the zip tag is cut. So when wind is blowing, you see it is blowing it, but all the other banners are intact. I never really know that that is how it is. Sometimes they say that he who wears the shoes knows the angle it pinches. Now that I am wearing the shoe, I am telling you how I feel and what I see. And I think I should let us condemn that and call the public to be on the lookout.
Yeah. Jim, from your type involved in politics, have you seen any sign stealing or desecration?
Honestly, no.
Is that right?
No, I didn't. But I have noticed with the first signs that my signs on my property keep disappearing. So I don't know how that factors in.
Ah. Well, there's another sign of vandalism. I think that it reflects poorly on the city. And I think it would be good if someone in the city council meeting on Tuesday made some, some city councillor, some city official, made some comment and said, this is not the right way to do business. Maybe get the Democratic City Committee and the Republican City Committee Chairman together and jointly make a statement. Because, because it's a nonpartisan election, but underneath, a lot of us have, do have party affiliations. But Fru, what are the people telling you? What are issues that are getting people excited these days?
Well, the people are concerned in my district about cleaning the parks, the streets, and also the trash on the streets. And also about education, about safety, about the environment. And like I said, in most places that I go, and even with the neighborhood meetings, most people say, they are glad to see me. And some of them say that my opponent is not visible, they've not really heard from him. And some complain that they have had issues with their streetlights in front of their area and they have called and no one has paid attention. So those are really the things that I hear. People complain about homelessness and people just roaming the streets. And they really want, I mean, and these are the issues that I am very, very concerned about and really want to be the voice of District 7 and the City Council. And that is why I am walking the streets, not driving past by, by talking to the people. I engage with them and I really feel, I listen and they educate me a lot on some of the issues that I really, I knew, but I did not really understand the magnitude. So that is what I get from the people. And regardless of my signs disappearing, the voices of the people encourage me. And I believe that the power of the people is more important than the people in power.
Yeah, I agree with that. Do people feel unsafe on the streets?
Well, Lowell is a safe place. You know, we give credit to our law enforcement. They are always visible and everywhere. And like I mentioned to you earlier, when I call the police, within, I know how busy they are, but within less than 30 minutes, they come and get a report. So I would not be the one to say that our streets are not that very safe. We are like any other city in the Commonwealth. So, but I give credit to our law enforcement officers, our fire departments, because I see the trucks responding to emergency, even our EMTs. So those are institutions that make our city safe. And it's only on this institution, safety does not only rely on this institution, but it relies on all of us. You see something, you say something.
Yeah. So are people complaining about the city taxes, the real estate tax, the excise tax?
Well, obviously, normally, I am a landlord and we need services in the city. And one thing that we need all these services and amenities and make our city safe, the roads good, it needs expenses, it needs to be paid for. So as the taxes are rising, we just call on the authorities that when we pay these taxes, it should reflect in the improvement of our cities. Because I believe that all of us who pay real estate taxes and business taxes, when we see that some, that our city is being kept clean, there is security, there's all these issues that you have enumerated, I think we all would like to be, to make that possible.
I know that the city council doesn't get involved in running the schools, except for maintenance of the schools. Do you have any thoughts on, should we be air conditioning the schools? Are we maintaining the schools properly? Do you have any thoughts in that area?
Well, those are very good questions. I'm not on the city council, but I don't know if the city council, if the city council budget is part of, also allocate funds for the school committee. Then indirectly, the city council has a lot of authority to see that the schools are well taken care of. Because all those things that you have enumerated, it takes money, it takes budget, it takes resources. And we should look first on where the resources are coming. Do we have the resources to be able to maintain this institution? Because there is something that is verbal and also action. Because action has to be, to be supported by the resources we have. If we look at our resources and then we know that we don't have the resources and we need the services, what are the means that we need to get these resources to serve our city, our district well? Because we can only complain. And if there are no resources, we should also be willing to take a little bite here so that make things better.
Yeah. I mean, I was not shocked, but I was a little surprised and maybe kudos to the, you know, school superintendent Liam Skinner. But he shut down the school Thursday and Friday because of the heat. That, I don't recall a school ever being shut down for heat. Jim, do you recall the school being shut down for heat?
No.
You've had four kids, what, four kids in the school?
Four kids in the school. One father, and four kids.
How about you, Fru? How many kids you had in the school?
I had four kids through the school system. And Cliff, I mean, on that note, I mean, we should also commend the decision taken by the school committee to shut down schools because it is healthy for the students. And if they can take such decisions for the health of the students, we should commend them. Because sometimes people may criticize and wait only for something bad to happen. The authorities are there, elected or appointed because they have the skills to manage whatever is in their, under their control. So when they make this decision, it's because of some conditions, things that they see that we, the public, do not see and make the decisions. But unfortunately, sometimes the public will only jump in when things go sour.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add in that this past week, when it was hot in New York, they canceled a quite a few number of games, soccer games, outdoor activities, the schools did, because of the heat index. So, I mean, this isn't for shutting down the school, that's something new. But as far as sports, this is, they have actual guidelines and they've been doing that for a while.
Anything else, Fru, about the campaign you'd like to throw out there?
Well, Cliff, I mean, I just want to say that the people in Lowell and the people in my district, regardless of some of the hiccups that are happening, they welcome me on the streets. And if I am still knocking doors and people are cheering me on, that is the Lowell spirit. That's the spirit that we are moving Lowell forward. And nothing is always very smooth. The city has to face these ups and downs so that we work hard and appreciate our city. And I just call on everyone to let the democratic process take its course. And wish all the very best on all of us who are on this campaign trail. Looking forward to provide a peaceful and safe city where all of us can live in like brothers and sisters and celebrate our diversity.
So you were talking about democracy, so slipping halfway around the world. We had this coup in Niger, what, a month ago? And then we just had a coup in Gabon last week? So do we have any new news out of that area?
Well, the only news out of the area is, what I would say is, what we in the West call coup, I think that it is a new breed of democracy that is taking place in those areas. We talk about our own democracy that would take control here. But out there, what I would equally say, reading the news, reading CNN, Al Jazeera, is that recently, you've not heard in Mali that there is any fighting amongst the people about Haqqada and all these other places that there have been coups. And most of these areas, they are in the Sahel area, Togo, Mali, Okina Faso, Niger, Benin, and now Gabon. You see, they are rising up and it looks as if there were some invisible foreign forces that came in, they were actually instigating and organizing this and destabilizing this place. When you look in most of these places, the citizens, the locals are jubilating and hailing the people who have taken of this power, that they are the ones who are representative of what is going on, on the ground and speaking for the people. And when you look on the streets, which I rarely see on the Western public media, they are really jubilating and carrying this around. You don't see foreign troops patrolling the streets with ammo, vehicles, and guns. And they are not killing themselves. That should equally tell you something, that democracy is the voice of the people, with the people and for the people. And the people are taking, those who are criticizing are coming from outside and those that these people are troubling with serving, not their own people, but foreign voices and foreign interests.
Wow. But, but it is causing turmoil. I saw somewhere where the price of onions had doubled. I don't know if onions in that particular nation are a food staple or a supplement, but it did suggest that there are some issues. I just, I don't see much news, like you say. I'm not sure the Western press is reporting this. I did see that we've got about a thousand troops in Nigeria, US military, and we've relocated them out away from the city, but that's all I've seen on that.
Well, when you talk about the shortages of food, and that is what we in the West would talk about. And those shortages are as a result of the instabilities, that if you really look very well, they are coming from outside, not from within. If you can ask yourself, let's just be very honest and see which European country has ever been sanctioned, has ever been imposed, they have imposed sanction on. Why do the European countries always gang together to impose sanctions on African countries? And the resources, it is these very countries that are sustaining Europe. Is it not to defend their interests? When you impose sanction on these countries, you, I mean, you limit the resources that can, that the people need. And that's an, an indirect way to instigate violence, to rise up. And we know very well, the atrocities that mostly how they are looting the resources from Africa and typically defend colonies. And you realize that it is really now that you see that Europe, Africa can survive without Europe, but Europe cannot survive just even one hour without Africa.
Well, there is the sanctions against Russia, but Russia's impeding food flow from Ukraine to Africa, and that's not a good thing. I mean, that part of Africa depends on grain from Ukraine, so...
Well, I didn't, well, I talked, you have avoided naming me any one country in Europe.
Yeah.
And then you bring in Russia, but that also equally shows how the media also protects and cover Europe.
Well...
So can I ask Fru a question?
Sure. Ask him a question.
Fru, we enjoyed a visit from the candidate you ran against, Paul Rathen Yem, the other day. And Paul Rathen Yem and I disagree about auxiliary dwelling units, because of our parking. Now, when you go home at night, or when you come home, do you have a special parking spot that you park your car in all the time? Or do you have to fight with, do you have to scramble on the street to find a spot? That's my first question. And then my second question's going to be right after that. ADUs, auxiliary dwelling unit, that lets the building owner add an apartment to an existing building by building up, building sideways, building somehow, or just maybe putting some more walls up. But auxiliary dwelling units, the city council, and especially the city administration, want to do this because it's more tax revenue for them. My gripe about this is there's no parking. So question one, Fru, when you get home, do you have your own parking spot? And page two, auxiliary dwelling units, what are we going to do about parking, listening to you?
Well, thank you. To answer the first question, John, I am lucky that I have off, a lot of off-street parking in my property. And that is a luxury and that is not what most people in the city do have. Parking is an issue when the public, when the population is growing and also when families are growing and having many cars. That is something that the city has to be concerned with. Because when it comes to at the times of bad weather, it's like during the snow, it really makes security driving around very, very difficult. And it is something that should be studied.
That's another issue, the snow issue. The question is, the ADU, auxiliary dwelling unit, should they have parking or should, is it let them fight, let them scramble on the street for a spot? What are your thoughts?
Well, that's, that's my, you asked me two questions, John, about my parking and about...
You answered that question. And question two, ADUs, where should an ADU be able to park their car?
Well, there should be parking. That's one, I mean, that's very, that's a very, very good concern. And that is, with the parking, as I mentioned, the parking also impedes security. Because if there are ADUs without parking, these people will be parking on the streets. And when it comes in times of security, it will also impede the movement of fire department, law enforcement officers and all those. So it's, that should be looked in totality, not only isolating what aspects. And the people that we elect them, I should listen to the community. And also, we have experts, town planners, and these people would bring, we utilize these resources. We should not just listen to one aspect of it and draw conclusions. And when I watch the debate at the city hall, I mean, they are very, very informative and shows that all the city councils, most of them are very intelligent. They are not, it's good that we make these debates. And at the end, one thing is with democracy, at the end, after we listen to all of this, this debate doesn't, should not break the city councillors also. It is about our city. It's actually listening to every councillors that are listening to the district and those who are at large to make, to move Lowell forward. Yes, I agree with you that there should be parking available for those who would like to, who are given permit. Because before you are given that permit, they consider these, these conditions.
You're using a wavy word there called should. So I get, I get a nice big house, I'm going to, I'm going to have some more relatives move in. And must they have off-street parking in your mind? Or should? Now, should, forget about it. They're going to go scramble on the street about it. So I'm just giving you what I'm, what my feedback's going to be. So that's a simple question, Fru. They must have off-street, street parking for the ADUs or it doesn't matter? Those are your two choices.
I would think that if there are ADUs allowed, the property should be able to allocate off-street, at least some off-street parking.
Don't give me, don't give me the should business. Because should is a wavy government answer like, maybe. Maybe they should have parking.
I disagree with you. Shoulds are...
Really? I should let Fru finish.
Well, you should let Fru finish.
Let's let Fru finish.
But let's talk about...
Okay, John. In life, you, in life, things change. And you don't make a condition saying that you must. Those are automatums. And I have never heard in the discussion at the city council, for any city councillor to make automaton.
So what do you, when you're downtown, when you're downtown, what do you tell a parking meter? You must pay or you should pay? The parking meter?
You, because they are there.
At the parking meter, you must pay or you should pay?
You don't, you don't speak to the parking meter. If the parking meters were people, you would, you would talk to them. But because we are dealing with mechanical issues, you have to pay, you must pay.
Okay, so the ADU, they must have parking or they don't have to have parking? Which is it?
It is very critical that they have to have parking, parking. And the off-street parking is for the public. For anyone who is, if you have to have an ADU, you should also reserve at least one parking within your property. Those off-street parking, those public parking are meant for everyone and should be, it should not be reserved for just because it is in front of your house.
Okay, let me just remind you of this, okay? People come before the boards all the time, looking, in my neighborhood, back central, we're going to, we want to, we want to take this single house, tear it down, we're going to put in 40 apartments. And they're going to park at the, they're going to park at the Rook Garage over at the train station. And in Lowell, Lowell says, perfect. Now, there's nobody who going to walk from my house, you know where my house is, to the Rook Garage with their groceries. Just not going to happen. In a snowy, cold February morning, nobody wants to walk from my house to the train station. See, in Lowell, that's a little game they all play, all these condos in downtown Lowell. They all, I can park in the public garage. So Lowell's administration said, yeah, more tax money. We don't care whether you park. So that's what I just ask you to be cautious of. I'll let you conclude, we'll go back to Cliff.
Okay, John, that is very true. We elect people that we think that they have the skill, they have the intellectual acumen to be able to make decisions for the benefit of the city. And if those who are giving these permits do not consider... And if those who are giving these permits do not consider that you give a permit into a residential, uh, 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 property that are far away from the city, and you believe what they say, then you are more interested than the security and, uh, of our city. So, it's very, very difficult to blame these property owners, but I think the problem lies in who gives the permit. What do you say about that? Do you blame the property owners or you blame those that we elect to look at the conditions and issue the permits?
Okay, so, well, that just jumps right over to, uh, so we put all the ADUs in there, Lowell blows all that extra money, and then you know what? We got a wicked good idea. Let's put meters in all the neighborhoods. Let's make everybody who lives in the neighborhood pay for their parking. And administration will go, "Yeah, we can all get cars and drive out to Westford where we live." At what point does the city's got to take a good look at itself and realize, when you go home every day, when I go home every day, I don't have to worry about where I'm gonna park? Nobody in this, Jim is the only one I know that parks on the street. Jimbo does not have a driveway. Everybody else on the show, "Mike, you got a driveway up in New York?"
What's, I couldn't hear you, John, again, and, uh, you said about in New York?
You got a driveway, you got a driveway in New York?
Yes, yes, I have a dr- I live in a, more of a rural area, so, um, we all have driveways where I live, there's not a parking issue. Um, but I grew up in the city of Rochester, and, uh, there used to be a lot of issues, especially during the winter time, when you'd have to park on alternate sides of the street because of snow plowing. Or even during the regular, they had restrictions where I grew up, that you park on certain days on one side of the street or the other.
See, my feeling is if you got no place to park, you're gonna take my parking spot. Sorry, you're not gonna, actually, my wife, there's a sign on the, on the hot tub that says "The Queen," and people respect that. They don't park in that spot. That's the only reserved spot that I have marked. Interesting. Back over you, Cliff. Thank you, Fru. Thank you, Mike.
You brought up parking downtown. Uh, Fru, have you been downtown to park recently? Have you used the new system?
No, I've not used a new system because, uh, since I walk out of, um, the city, and, uh, I move downtown mostly in the evening where, when, uh, the parkings are off, and also weekends, I've been, uh, lucky.
Yeah. John, have you had to use the new parking meter system?
Cliff, I have a handicap placard. I never pay. You look at, if it's a nice day and you want, you wanna bring grandma to the beach and she has a handicap placard, you can park at the beach for free. In city of Lowell, I cannot park inside of a garage, so I will always find a spot on the street, shove my handicapper up there, and zippity-doodah, I'm not paying for nothing.
Why can't you park in a garage?
Downtown New York, downtown New York City. I can park right on the street for free. There you go, handicap placard.
Why, uh, why can't you park in a parking garage?
They won't let you park for free.
Ah.
And for me, Cliff, one thing is, I mean, uh, throughout the past two, three months, I have been walking the streets for my, when I'm going downtown Lowell. It's easier for me to walk and talk to people, so that in itself, that's one of the reasons why I've not been able to use, uh, public, uh, parking. Cliff, I was asking, uh, is there any way that they should, uh, the public should be aware of those zoning areas? Have they, I'm just ignorant of this, have they, what has the city done to sensitize, uh, the public about the new parking meters?
Apparently not very much. I'm assuming, and this is an assumption, 'cause I didn't see it, the next time I go down, I'll look. I'm assuming the zone number is pasted somewhere on the parking kiosk. So, the, the first parking kiosk I went to was not working, so I had to go to another one on the other side of the street. Uh, if that one hadn't been working, I would've had to go further down the, somewhere else looking for a parking kiosk and might have to enter that zone number. But, uh, it was a different experience. I'm not sure it was a better experience. Uh, but yeah, having your handicap, uh, placard is always good. It gives you a chance to, uh, uh, gives you a chance to park for free and not worry about the bureaucracy. So...
Because...
Go ahead.
I was trying to mention that with every new technology, there's always, uh, a lot of frustration, and, uh, when you spend more time training and educating, uh, the users, it makes it, uh, user-friendly.
In front of us, we have, uh, Mr. Fru Kimbang. He is running for the, uh, the city council of Lowell.
District seven, that's, that is, uh, the acres on the Lower Highlands.
Okay. So, we are actually attending the, uh, Lower Folk Festival. Given the history of this festival and the impact it has on Lowell, what comments do you have concerning this festival?
You know, this is a wonderful, if one to travel around the world in seven days, come to Lowell. I was here thirty-six years ago when this festival started. You know, people say that Lowell is the melting pot. I said, "That is wrong. Lowell is the bowl of salad." And when you come there, you see people from various nationalities and everything. I am very proud to run for city council here in Lowell. Lowell has given me so much, and to whom, uh, much is given, much is respected. Originally, I am from, uh, Cameroon, Bamenda, it should be very specific, man called Bamenda. So, I've been in Lowell for almost, uh, thirty-eight years, and Lowell is a beautiful city that welcomes everyone around the world. You can see around here, you see people, this is the world in miniature. So, Lowell, beautiful Lowell, it brings along together many, many, many people. And, uh, to travel around the world in seven days, come to Lowell, you would have traveled the seven continents of the world. Thank you two very much.